Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Joint Council and Planning Commission Work Session. Were our at held at the Twinsburg Government Center on Tuesday, May 21st. Shannon, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. Coats?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Barr? Mr. Benachi?
Here.
Mr. Bellin?
Here.
Mr. Laddie?
Here.
And we will call the order for the Planning Commission also. Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Hoagler?
Present.
Mr. Walker?
Here, ma'am.
Mr. Chipley?
Here.
Mr. Teaback?
Present.
All right, so, thank you all for being here. Uh, we're excited to work with ZoneCo, our consultants here, um, via Zoom, to give this presentation for you tonight. One thing, I won't still his under, he has a really great presentation prepared. But one icon that I did want to point out is we have been asking, uh, we have some secret questions about how the residents have been involved, or how we've been incorporating our comments into the code. So some of the ways we're doing it, um, are you'll see little icons on these slides that will say, like, you spoke and we listened, um, you'll see those little icons, those are specifically, um, items that were called out and addressed, um, from residents in there. So I just wanted to point that out, um, as part of the public engagement process. But Sean, I'll let you go ahead and take it from here.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. Um, should I share my screen? Is it the best way to do this? Let's see here. All right. So... Okay, you can see the presentation?
Yes.
Great, all right. Well, hello, everybody. My name is Sean Suter. I'm lead principal and founder of ZoneCo. Uh, your lead consultant on the zoning code update. We've enjoyed working with, um, Twinsburg for oh, better part of, uh, twelve, twelve months or so. Uh, you've got a great staff there. We enjoy working with them, and I think we put together something, um, that the city can, um, be proud of and also build on. So, uh, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to give you the highlights of some things, um, about the process, the ed code itself, and, um, some of the highlights of the changes, uh, that were made based on things we've heard uh, throughout the process. Uh, and to get your feedback and input just based on what you've seen of it and answer any questions you might have. So appreciate your time, um, and the joint work session tonight. So, uh, the complete overhaul, uh, really was something the city decided to do because doing it in pieces, uh, usually causes more issues, uh, than it solves. Um, it's really hard to get a code to be consistent, uh, through the code without taking a fresh look at it. So the city decided to take a a, a look, a holistic view of the code, review of the code. There were a lot of chapters that were cross-referenced and intertwined throughout the code. Uh, and there have been a lot of piecemeal updates to the code over time. The last, uh, major overhaul was 1989. And we see that a lot throughout the country. We work on codes all over and, you know, no one really wants to take a comprehensive overall of their zoning code, uh, all that often. It's, uh, obviously a major process. So uh, oftentimes, we're just kind of seeing that code changes are being made, sort of to address the issues of the day. And as you do that over time, it just kind of cobbles together and, and things become inconsistent and terms become inconsistent. And it just becomes harder and harder to use and read. And kind of what we have here, you're not, um, alone in that, but it's good time to take a fresh look at everything, which is what we did. Along the way, obviously, engagement, uh, of the residents of Twinsburg who know the city best, uh, was front and center throughout the process. Um, we also have engaged with, uh, the mayor and city staff, uh, the Code Twinsburg Working Group, uh, City Council, Twinsburg Businesses, and Planning Commission throughout the process. Uh, really important feedback that we've gotten from the community and key stakeholders. How have the public been, uh, engaged throughout this process? We've had about eighty, eighty to ninety touchpoints with, uh, the, the public throughout this process. You can see whether it would be focus groups, public open houses, working group meetings, surveys, uh, mailers, uh, social media updates, the most common way. Um, and then we have a project, uh, page, a, a website together, Twinsburg, uh, which has been another way to interact with folks and receive comments. So, um, we've tried to do everything we can to get, uh, as broad input on these important topics as possible. So, uh, tonight, we'll go through, um, the first, uh, section, which will be the document format. Uh, and we'll pause after each one for any questions or comments you might have. Uh, the process, uh, that's process zoning process. Um, the, we'll go through the new districts and overlay and zones and dimensional standards, and then uses. And like I said, opportunity for questions and comments after each section. So one of the things, uh, that's probably most helpful in creating a user-friendly document is the format of the document. And that's something we spent some time on. Uh, most modern zoning codes rely on tables, uh, and charts and graphics, uh, along with words to convey these, um, complex, uh, topics and complex, um, matters as simply as possible. So you have what is, I would consider a fairly traditional zoning code, Ohio zoning code. We see a lot, especially in Northeast Ohio. It's just list things, right? Um, and a lot of the things it lists are somewhat outmoded. Anyway, they go back probably for, uh, many decades. Think, for example, you see on the, on the slide here, a dressmaker, um, you know, that's not really much of a land use anymore that needs to be regulated. So there are things like that where we were able to update definitions and uses to the types of uses that are, uh, more prevalent, uh, today. Uh, and so we also then put together these tables and charts of the uses, which show allowed uses, conditionally allowed uses, and allowed accessory uses. So everything in these charts in these districts is going to show everything that's allowed, uh, or conditionally allowed, or allowed as an accessory use. Everything that's not listed on the charts would then be, uh, prohibited. So you can see, hopefully, a little bit easier way to use. And then if there are specific use uh, standards that go along with the use, like if you look at the right, the telecommunication tower, for example, uh, that gives you a section of the code to refer to, click on, go to that section of the code. So always keeping in mind, um, the, the user and the administrator and, uh, uh, ease of use and administration. And you can see, uh, just a simple chart can be a lot simpler than, um, you know, a, a complex chart. Uh, and this one also includes conditionally allowed uses, uh, listed within each zone. So you don't have to flip back and forth to figure out what is conditionally allowed and what is, um, permitted by right. Uh, so that's the document format. Any questions or comments, uh, on that at this point? Fairly straightforward, but um, happy to answer any questions. Yeah, okay. All right. Here, there we go, process, okay. So obviously, as part of the zoning code rewrite, we take a look at your processes. Um, this is a lot of discussion with staff, members of the community on how things are working or not working. Um, and here are just four, four highlights really of, uh, how we think we're, uh, this draft is improving the process. Assigned variances, uh, this is a fairly common variance. It goes to the ARB currently. Uh, the proposed language would have the assigned variance go to the, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, and so, Board of Zoning or Building Appeals. And so that, that will put that in a body that's used to hearing variances rather than the ARB. Um, there is an option for City Council to call up, uh, site plans. Uh, right now, you go through a planning commission, uh, to City Council process. Planning Commission makes a recommendation. Uh, this proposed provision allows City Council to actually review, to kind of accelerate that, take final action on site plans when it's determined to be appropriate, typically complex, uh, projects, um, that need, um, you know, some City Council's specific review. So that's, uh, one proposal. Um, public notice for conditional use permit hearings. The timeframe was, uh, thirty days. And we've proposed to shorten that to fourteen days. That's just to help businesses get, um, you know, get their conditional use permit, um, a little sooner rather than having to wait a whole full month, uh, to get, to get a hearing. Obviously, there's still a hearing, and there's still plenty of notice at fourteen days, but a, a month is, is can slow things down significantly. And then, uh, right now, there's a building commissioner, um, in, uh, in the zoning code has a responsibility, um, for issuing zoning permits and enforcing zoning regulations. And, um, the city is asked to create a zoning administrator role to replace the building commissioner's responsibilities relative to zoning. That's fairly standard, uh, as well, um, throughout Ohio. Okay, questions and comments on that? A little meteor?
Yes. I'll raise my hand if you're writing that in the store.
Please, evening.
Uh, Mark Cohen, um, uh, I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission. Uh, and I have a question regarding the City Council call up of site plans. The way you described it, it really doesn't make sense to me, where you said that a complex site plan would go right to the city, to the City Council, not to Planning Commission. And typically complex, that's more aligned with what we would be reviewing. Now, I understand simplicity and trying to streamline things, but I'm not sure I understand what, why, or what specific type of site plan that would be that would bypass us and go directly to council? Or they typically send it back to us when they have complex questions and issues?
Yeah, um, on that one, I don't, I think I may have misspoke. It still goes to Planning Commission. Um, and, and maybe, uh, you know, staff can elaborate on this since you use it more than I do, but, uh, on the call-up feature.
Yeah, I don't think, yes, it, it, it's not a bypass, Mark. It's not a bypass of the Planning Commission.
We don't.
It's, instead of a recommendation, instead of a recommendation that council would hear, um, it just wouldn't go to council unless it was called up.
So now you have, you sense that, so we have to approve a final site plan? That's the way it was now. No, I, I understand. That's not the way that I understood his explanation. This is, that makes it an option versus requirement. Well, we, we'd always like the ability to streamline it, not have to send it to you guys just to run it rampant unless there's an issue. Right, so if there's an issue, we have the ability to do that. Again, I'm just going off.
Correct. Let's say we had a downtown redevelopment project, and there was a involved site plan with public roadways. That would, say that would be a potential, um, call-up plan. Um, this is a process that the City of Hudson uses. Matt Bazana, our law director, um, recommended that we, um, implement this type of process. He said typically in Hudson, nothing is called up, but it's there if council would like to call it.
But that, your explanation makes much more sense. That's not the way that I understood that at all. Yes, somebody comes in, they want to put an addition on to their, their industrial building. We review, we approve it. There's really not a necessity. If it's acting for council to see it, bypass that. Push it forward. Makes a lot of sense.
You got it.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's, I guess it's an optional thing, um, that they have the authority to call up site plans. So I, I misspoke on that.
Yeah, but I, I had this meeting already that, that, that it makes sense. So Lynn, this is Craig Shipper, a question, I guess, on the thirty days to fourteen days. Is that feasible? I mean, don't, don't, doesn't the Planning Commission have to meet to approve these, uh, conditional use permits? And we don't meet that often?
Right, it's what it's asked, what it's, what that item says is the current thirty-day requirement for public notice would be reduced to fourteen days if we adopted, um, the draft as it is. I think the thirty days probably from back when we posted public notices in a newspaper, and we were relying on a newspaper to get that public notice out.
That's for them to show up to the conditional.
Yeah.
Got you.
So.
We don't have to, we don't have to approve a conditionally used permit in fourteen days?
No, no. Um, it's just shortening that notice period is what it's doing. Adjacent property owners would still be notified. Um, that's not a, that's not a timeframe to get on an agenda. It may be that a thirty-day public notice happens anyhow, just based on the date of the hearing versus the date of the submission. Um, but a lot of times, you have an applicant submitting a site plan, a conditionally used permit, possibly a variance request. We're going to Architectural Review Board, and, um, the thirty days is a little bit onerous.
Okay.
Yeah, the fourteen days puts it more in line with most, most codes. Any other questions on these? Okay. All right, so now we're getting to the map. Um, and this is where there's been some consolidation of districts. Uh, and we'll go through, uh, one by one, sort of what's changed on the map. Um, currently, you have, uh, a number of districts, uh, probably, uh, pushing, now, let's see, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, about sixteen to seventeen districts. And we have, uh, really consolidated those again for simplicity, and some of the districts just aren't calibrated, uh, you know, the, the way that they're being, uh, used anymore, uh, or the, uh, desired development pattern. So the first one is the C5, just a renaming to the downtown district. And this one just sort of is for ease of understanding. You know, not many people walk around saying, oh, I'm in the C5 district. Um, but people will know it when you say I'm in the downtown district. And so again, just for ease of, a sort of understanding, um, where it's located and being more intuitive, it's a name change. Um, again, a fairly, um, more common way of doing it, uh, in modern zoning codes. Uh, there's a new mixed PUD zone. Um, the purpose of this, and you can see where it's mapped there, is to create a, a mixed use, uh, by right, mixed use zone, walkable mixed use zone in that location. So, um, it doesn't require anything more to it, like any sort of site planning necessarily, um, outside of the regular process, but it does, um, allow for a mix of, of residential and commercial units all in one district. And that's the new mixed PUD zone. The riparian overlay was added. Again, this is to protect, uh, the watersheds uh, in the city. That is to create, um, what is essentially a setback or buffer around those riparian watersheds, um, so that anything done in there has to be natural, uh, no additional, um, uh, impervious services, buildings, that sort of things in those locations. Uh, again, to, um, for the purpose of, of protecting those important watersheds and, and water courses in your city. So that's been added. Uh, the C4 zone, um, is just an office-only zone. We didn't think that was, uh, it was zoned in very limited parts of the city. Didn't think that was necessary anymore. Um, very few zones are going to be, uh, solely office, uh, anymore, it mostly a mixed use. So, um, we propose to rezone that, those C4 areas to a C2 that just allows for more flexibility and more uses uh, in that zone, which is probably going to be necessary as office space and office uses sort of, um, you know, morph into other things or evolve over time. And we're not exactly sure where that's all going, but it's important maybe to provide some flexibility uh, in those areas so that they don't become vacant areas of town. And then, uh, we, we've consolidated the I-3 and the I-2 together. There was really no, just not a huge distinction, and it was sort of a leftover from more heavy manufacturing, industrial uses that are really not, uh, not prevalent anymore. Uh, clean industry, um, tech, uh, you know, tech industry kind of, uh, uses. Uh, clean tech are much more prevalent, uh, even in manufacturing today. So, you know, recognizing that Northeast Ohio is a very important innovation and manufacturing, uh, area, we thought we would change it from industrial, which is sort of a throwback term to innovation and manufacturing zone. So we've combined I-2 and I-3 and renamed it to, um, IM. That's it for the district overlay and zones. You'll see a, a new map, um, in a bit, but wanted to, um, highlight those changes. Any questions on that?
Mark Cohen, um, so it looks like we've gotten thrown out the word district. We're not really using that anymore. And we've replaced it with zones. Is that pretty consistent, I'm assuming, throughout the code?
Yes. The only, uh, district we would have would be the downtown district. Everything else would be a zone.
Yeah, and the distinction there is that a district would be very specific to a certain geography in town and certain development pattern in town. So your unique, your downtown is a unique development pattern. That's a unique, um, set of uses there. So we'd call that a district because it's only being, uh, mapped in one place. Zones can be mapped anywhere in the town, can be, uh, added, um, or, uh, any property in the town could be rezoned to a zone. So that's the distinction. So you do have districts, zones, and overlays.
So I have a question about, uh, Chuck Benachi from City Council, question about the riparian stuff. So we have existing structures that are in that riparian area. Does that limit what could be done with those, or?
Yeah, so to explain that a little bit more, the riparian overlay are those riparian setbacks that are mapped by some county. So that would be the location of, uh, these, um, uh, setbacks. Um, land within the riparian overlay clearly either needs to remain in its natural state, be a walking or non-motorized recreation trail, or, um, it, it has some sort of ecological restoration and maintenance activities. Um, but obviously, there are buildings and things in them. Um, what this is saying, that no additional building structures or vehicular uses are to be constructed or expanded within that area. Um, and if for some reason that renders a property unusable, uh, they could get a development variance, uh, from that to allow for a productive use of the property. Um, obviously, continue to maintain those properties and maintain them in their existing conditions as non-conforming uses. Uh, and you would have to maintain, uh, these in a condition that facilitates native plant and wildlife habitation. So there's supposed to be natural areas, recognizing that there probably are improvements in them, uh, but that there can't be any new ones or expanded improvements.
So no new or expanding, so if somebody has a, a house, has part of their yard in the riparian area, they're not required to turn that into like a wild area, like untethered? But they would have to go through some sort of extra, uh, steps if they wanted to put in a fence or an outbuilding or something like that?
Um, not sure about the fence, but the outbuilding, yes.
Okay.
I am going to bring up a, a point. I overheard you, David, post about where is the riparian, um, overlay on our zoning map that we have as a handout? We didn't put this on top of our zoning map. It would muddle it way too much. It'd be very, very difficult to see. So we are linking it, um, in the code to Summit County, as well as if someone will be able to go. But if you put this on top of ours, it's, it's almost unreadable. So if you're wondering where it is.
So where were the generals?
But the, the general creed line and, and yeah.
Ticker Street.
Exactly. Yes.
Okay, any other questions on districts, overlays, and zones? Okay? All right, uh, and this is the proposed draft, uh, zoning map that we were just talking about with the new list of zones and districts. Um, notably, the combination of, um, the C4 into the C2. Uh, so you won't see a C4 there anymore. You see the downtown, and that's hatched around the downtown. That's a district. The combination of I-2 and I-3 into a new IM zone, um, primarily in the southern part of the city. You see the new MPUD, um, in a very specific, uh, spot, and that is, um, that could be zoned anywhere, but a, as of now, that would just be in that one location. Uh, and, um, pretty much the major changes, um, on that. Did I miss anything, uh, Becca or Lynn?
Nope.
Okay. So I think a simpler, uh, map, eliminating some zones that are not necessary anymore, maybe superfluous, um, and just trying to clean things up a little bit and make it as as simple as possible. Okay. And on the dimensional standards, um, again, uh, this is a, you spoke, we listened, act, uh, place your building heights. So throughout the, the history of Twinsburg zoning, we've had uh, building heights and sometimes, uh, other, other times, no building heights. Um, and so, uh, we've added some that make sense, where we heard that there may be need uh, to be, uh, building heights. For example, in the commercial zones, uh, a fifty-foot height limit, uh, that increases, uh, with setback increases. So as you get closer, uh, to the street, less setback, it would be, um, a lower, a lower height. And as you go further away from the street, where there's more front setback, their height would be higher. And, um, you can see there that there was a downtown limit added. So it'd be a fifty-foot maximum if it's greater than thirty-five foot front setback. So you could go higher if you're setback further, uh, lower if you're, if you're closer to the street. A limit was also added in the IM zone, um, so that also, uh, would, um, you know, increase with setback increase, uh, at a fifty-foot height limit. Um, so what you have now is, if you have to get a height increase of up thirty-five feet in a commercial or industrial district, uh, you would do that through a conditional use permit hearing. Uh, but in, in, in this case, um, we've added some height, uh, limits that would allow you to get these, um, by right. Okay. Any ki, any questions on the building height changes? So fifty feet in the commercial, um, which increases with setback increase, um, fifty-foot height limit is what's proposed. Right now, there's none, no height limit. And then in the downtown, there's no height limit, but we would have a fifty-foot maximum, uh, if you're greater than or equals a thirty-five foot front setback. And that's to try to keep the downtown area sort of in the right, in, in the the context and the character that's there now, that historic context and character. And the industrial, uh, obviously, you know, uh, this will limit some of the uses, especially around, I know there's some concerns around residential areas, uh, if we limit the height, uh, to, um, thirty-five foot. But if you increase the setback, then the height can go up a little bit. That gives a buffer between adjacent surrounding land uses. And you can see, uh, just for reference, on the left there, you know, what this means, what's a, a fifty-foot height, five stories, uh, or a three-story building, um, and, and kind of get a context for what that is. So thirty-five feet is going to be pretty standard for a, a two, maybe three-story building. Uh, fifty feet probably gets you around four, maybe five of the flat roof. So that gives you an idea for kind of the height and scale en masse, and all, I think, in pretty pretty good keeping with the character and the scale en masse of Twinsburg. Okay, so, yes.
How was height measured if you have a pitched roof?
The pitched roof, I believe, and we have a section on measurement, uh, in the beginning. The pitched roof would be to the center point of the highest gable. So it would be the, um, mean height of the highest gable, where it'd be measured to. Flat roof would be top of the flat, of the roof.
That's.
And that would be
I don't.
Me, I'm sorry, the average elevation at the base.
Thing the same as it is, you said?
Yeah, I don't think we've changed it. That's how it is now.
Nah. No real reason to change that, I don't think. Okay. Next is the R4 zone lot with change. Um, and, uh, uh, you know, I think Beth can speak to this a little bit better than I, but it's, you know, the uh, subdivisions aren't really, um, complying with the current ninety to hundred-foot, uh, width anyway. Um, there's only, you know, uh, I think one subdivision meeting the ninety-foot width minimum. Um, so this was a change to go to seventy-five. Um, uh, just to, uh, for a minimum lot width. just to, for a minimum lot width, to kind of reflect what's going on in the marketplace and what's being built. So I think that's fairly straightforward. And then we talked to folks who were saying that the minimum housing size requirement is too onerous. Right now, you've got 1,800 square foot minimum house, unit size dwelling unit sizes in the R2, 1,700 in the R3, 1,600 in the R4. And just in our engagement with the public and looking at existing conditions, we thought that a 1,500 square foot minimum for a housing unit, single-family housing unit, would be more palatable, allow for, you know, smaller, smaller homes on maybe smaller lots and increase the housing supply some, without, you know, being out of character context with Twinsburg. So this is for residential infill development, as, and you can see a lot of houses, you know, that go back to the 80s and even earlier than that, were not that much bigger than 1,100, 1,200 square feet. So 1,800 square feet was probably a little bit high, and we thought 1,500 square foot was a good, just kind of baseline for the town, based on sort of an average. Thoughts about that? And? Another you spoke, we listened. This has to do with front setbacks in the downtown. Downtown is interesting because, you know, you have your historic development pattern there around the green. And a few buildings are left, and obviously, those were done way before there were cars and need for parking and all that stuff. And as time has marched on in Twinsburg, it's the, the downtown has seen a much more suburban development pattern. And we heard a lot of folks in the community saying, you know, we don't really want more of that vehicular suburban style development along the, within the downtown, along the town greens. So one way to do that is to limit the setbacks, the front yard setbacks, to bring buildings closer to the street, sort of the historic development pattern, recognizing, of course, there's still going to be a need for parking, all that sort of thing. But the location of that being situated either on the side or in the rear of the property with the building being pulled up to the street. And so what we heard was it's not preferred to have parking in the front or to be vehicular focused, or have a front elevation that doesn't address the street in your downtown. And in some cases, parking is the prominent feature of the building in your downtown. So preferred is to have no parking in the front setback, to promote a pedestrian-friendly environment with buildings up to the street, and to have a prominent front elevation at the street front. As you can see on the right, a way to do that and still accommodate some parking off to the side and in the rear with an access point rather than sort of focused parking throughout the front yard, or having that be the dominant feature with the sidewall up along the main road. Questions on that? Okay. Any other questions on dimensional standards or any of, any of that in section four? Okay. All right, uses. So most of the uses are going to remain the same throughout the code, with the exception of cleaning up some, removing some sort of antiquated ones, adding in uses like microbrewery, things that people want, you know, more in the modern marketplace. Another thing that's a hot topic that we heard from community members is accessory use structures on residential properties. Right now, you can have one addition, sorry, one additional accessory use structure in addition to your detached garage. And we heard people saying, hey, what about a she shed, or what about a little art studio, or some sort of home occupation business? Could we add that in in addition to a accessory structure along with a detached garage? And so this is one that, you know, on, with the right constraints included in the code and without taking up too much of the property, we have proposed to add two detached accessory use structures in addition to the detached garage. Now, it doesn't include the accessory dwelling unit, which is only allowed currently as an attached accessory dwelling unit as a conditional accessory use. Any thoughts or comments on that? Okay?
For personal use, or would you have a business license in that?
Yeah, it would not be, it would be for a home occupation, so there wouldn't be people coming and going. Mostly going to be like a studio kind of thing for someone. Yeah, they may have to have a business license, but it wouldn't be for a public, open to the public kind of thing. It would follow this.
Other side restrictions with that?
Yes.
Set itself landing and all that?
There are, yes.
Yes.
Good. I would assume, I just, and like setbacks from property lines, all that?
Yeah, it's in, it's in, I think we didn't print it, but it is, it's in section 110901 of the proposed code. But yes, all of that is in there as well.
This is only really going to apply to areas that aren't governed by homeowners association.
Correct. The question or the comment that was just stated was, this is only for areas that aren't governed by an HOA, and that is, that is correct.
Yeah, this doesn't change any of the HOA regulations that may be in place, the private covenants. Probably a lot of your single-family are subject to.
So seems like, like one structure in addition to detached garage seemed to make sense, like why two, why not three? I mean, that.
Yeah, so why, why, why two? That was, we actually, this is a direct response of the survey. The overwhelming response was to allowing for two from the residents, and so that's, that's where we named it on the proposed code.
Is it stipulated there about the homeowners association bylaws govern over top of this?
I believe, I believe it does. We can double check that.
It doesn't say, you know, that's just a given, really.
Yeah, yeah, it's a given to you and to me, but I can guarantee you, as my association that I sit on is our fixture review board, nothing's a given. So I might recommend that something gets put in, if that's possible, to make people aware of that, I agree with you.
Yeah, we usually put that in the front of the section, saying that this doesn't, doesn't affect private covenants or private agreements, but I'll make sure that's in there.
Thank you, thank you.
Let me write that down. Okay. And that leads to the next. So it's not going to be kind of a wide open, you know, the Wild West of accessory use structures. You're still going to have a limitation. This is kind of a new concept. Right now, it's about lot coverage. We wanted to focus more on, which can get confusing, you know, what do you mean by lot? What is included in that? Really, what we care about for stormwater purposes is impervious surfaces. So many communities, in order to not overtax the stormwater system, will put some sort of limitation on the amount of impervious surface area in both commercial and residential zones. And so we've added that in, in each of your residential, commercial zones, saying, okay, here's how much impervious surface. That means everything under roof, all of your concrete, you know, surfaces, those kind of things, your quartz. You can see an example of one here in the middle that has a substantial amount of impervious surface relative to the properties next, next to it. So putting some reasonable limitations on that, still allow you to use your property the way you want and enjoy, but not to flood your neighbors, or also to overtax the system. And the problem is, if everyone does what the person in the middle here has done, they're going to have problems with the stormwater system. So there has to be some balance on that. And so that's really the focus of the impervious surface maximum requirements. The, right now, it's this lot coverage again, and that's more about how much building you can have on a property, and doesn't really get into too much on the other impervious surfaces. So we thought this was a better, more, more defensible regulation tied into its impacts on stormwater. And so a few more things that we heard as we did community engagement. Attached accessory dwelling unit is allowed as a conditional use in the downtown district, C1 zone and single-family residential zone. So that has to do with the ADUs. You do not have a detached accessory dwelling unit that's allowed in the code, but you do have an attached accessory dwelling unit. So for example, someone wants to, you know, have a walk-in basement with windows or something that they want to use for mother-in-law's suite or something like that, or to help them to age in place. That would be allowed only with a conditional use approval, so it would go through the public process. But this does address situations where someone may say, you know, I'd really like to have someone else living with me, or I'd like to be able to rent out a portion of my property to help me pay for the taxes, whatever, and stay in place, or to allow for incremental increases in housing supply in your city, in the downtown, or the C1, which is the neighborhood residential, or in a single-family residential zone. We talked about a lot of additional uses in the downtown district, you know, things that people are doing nowadays and maybe want to do in that area that should be a viable area around there, like a microbrewery or a lottie studio. And you can see those, allowing single-family homes as a conditional use in the downtown district. So not by right as it is now, but as a conditional use, if someone wants to do a single-family home. You know, we didn't want to make it completely prohibited, and that, because there are some in there. Providing some limitations for CBD and shop locations, so if we're going to have those uses being 500 feet or more from a residential zone, just to create some, a buffer from those uses, which can be, you know, very heavy traffic uses. Allowing new medical offices in the new IM zone. You know, that, seeing that IM zone is not smokestacks and noise and all that thing. It's actually usually clean tech nowadays, and some medical offices, medical labs, things like that, makes sense in those areas. And then beekeeping and livestock allowances, you know, clarifying those standards just to make it clear on what can and can't be done relative to beekeeping. I guess that's been something that's been an issue, based on things we've heard. So we wanted to add some, some standards there. That's it for uses. I think that's it for the whole presentation. So look forward to hearing any more overall general comments, questions, or thoughts on anything we've discussed. Thank you.
Do we really want to allow, even as a conditional use, a single-family home in the downtown district?
Well, that, I spoke with Michael before then, our presentation, or that, I think we should talk about that.
Which seems totally against what I've always felt we were trying to establish. I mean, I know it's conditional use, so that gives us some leeway, but it opens the door.
So Sean, so currently, we don't allow single-family homes in our downtown.
Oh, but there, but there are single-family homes, right? That's, that's what it was.
Move to Brian, intensify residential densities in the downtown. That hasn't happened. So, yeah. I mean, is there any benefit either way to this? You're saying, Mark, that you just don't see it.
Yeah, I know we wanted to try to increase the residential capacity down there, but taking up what I would call a prime piece of land in the downtown district and popping up single-family residents there just seems to go against what we've been trying to do, at least in my opinion, in that, in that area. I would see some people shaking their heads, and I mean, anybody can throw in their thoughts, but that's. Why didn't we change it?
Thank you. We changed it because it is hampering the current residents of single-family homes in that district to upgrade their properties.
Yep. We're not prohibiting them from, if they already there, they already live there, from putting in addition or doing something, but
We are.
We are currently.
They are non-conforming use in that district. As a consequence, they can't add on unless it's for a second unit. So that's why we.
But that allows somebody to come in and take a non-res, a non-piece that's not currently used as a single-family residence, that we're hoping they're going to put something else there and pop in a.
Right. So how do we have our cake and eat it too, Sean?
Well, I think, I think we could, we could probably put a provision here that any single unit, like one-unit dwelling, single-family uses in the code at the time of adoption is considered a by-right use, a permitted use. And then what we could do is, and that, that would take care of that, because I agree. I don't think we need more single-family units in the downtown. The downtown's already been suburbanized enough. And I think, you know, we are allowing multi-unit dwellings by right in the downtown zone, if any, you know, decide to come in. Two-unit dwellings, maybe, or maybe even some townhomes. We could do like an attached, single-family might work well in the downtown. So I think we can probably make a, make a statement in the code and provide for those that exist, and maybe even list out, if, I don't know how many there are, I don't think there are a ton, but list out those addresses and just say that they're, they're deemed permitted by right. Could do that.
Yes.
So I would be in favor, this is Steve, she begs the question, I would be in favor of that, only because we've lost some historic homes through development and everything. There are still some homes in there with a lot of character that, you know, if somebody's willing to preserve them, I think we should allow them to preserve them. But I don't want to see them basically cannibalizing, you know, just to say that, oh, it's a single-family, oh, I can do whatever I want. So I don't know how we balance that to keep some of the homes that still have some character in there. One of them is a parsonage for the Congregational Church.
And the only way to do that, really, to be put a historic district on it. And then you would have, have to approve the demolition of those buildings.
I can tell you, most of those homes in that, at least in the 82 corridor, are at least 90, 90-plus years in age.
Yeah, they'd be eligible for designation, but they're not already. But we don't, we don't have a historic district at all in here. I don't know if that's something you'd want to even consider, but that would be the way to do that.
Don't get me wrong, I'm in favor of the downtown, the concept for our downtown district, but it's still a balance.
Yeah.
How do we preserve, you know, properties that people really want to take pride in, but how do we, you know, have the provision that we want for the downtown districts?
Yeah.
I have a question, Lynn, regarding beekeeping on, I think it's on Chamberlain Road. They're having, they're keeping bees and, and, you know, and livestock. You know, the joke, playing the chicken across the road. I mean, they're crossing the road like everything. So what can be done about Shepherd Road? The code update has regulations that will assist with that, requiring enclosures and putting limits. Whereas now, there aren't any.
Our current code doesn't speak to that at all.
It really does.
Our current code doesn't speak to that at all, it really doesn't, and that's why we wanted to include those.
What was the number of beekeeping or bee times, three, two?
I believe it's three, you can have three on an acre or a lot, I don't have that pulled up, but yeah.
Yeah, but lot, i- if it's less than a half acre, you can have three under the proposed. Provisions, if it's between a half acre and one acre, you could have five, and lots greater than one acre, you could have up to ten.
You do need to be registered in this proposed code. But currently, no, we don't have anything.
The code you said says that you have to be registered? I don't see that.
Yeah, the state of Ohio, you have to be registered.
Okay, I didn't see it in the section, but. That's what I asked. I don't know that.
One at a time, speak louder. Were there any other questions or comments for Sean?
I do have a question. On the. The proposed updates for zoning, I just need clarification. Where it says section nine, expand downtown district formerly C five to include Giant Eagle Plaza or Town Center. When I look at the map. I guess is Mavis in the golden? I get confused, cause it looks like we're not, you go hard at Town Center. But that, I looked at it, that was my biggest question, okay. Got it, is that what that makes sense? Okay.
I was in charge of the circle, so if there's some gravel, that's me. Was there any other questions or comments for Sean?
I just wanna say, I think you got, group did a great job. It's a long overdue. And, you know, it's a moving target, things move so fast now. Ryan came up with it, and we wanna stay ahead of the curve just because of economies and. We want people to come to Twinsburg. So, but we wanna be able to regulate as well, so I think great job guys. My second.
Again, it's a balance for sure.
Can I ask a general question, Mike David Post? My general question, since this has come out, have there been a lot of people in the public that have come out that we don't like this part of this part of this part?
I I think we've had. A total since this has been out two months now, seven comments, would you say, and that's.
Most of it is questions.
Most of it's questions, and I would say half of them have come from Chuck. We haven't, to be honest with you, David, we haven't had, not a lot of people have been, I have not had a personal email reached out, a one, I guess we've had one, one gentleman. But the Together Twinsburg project page, if anyone at any point in time can add a question on there, if they just wanna email Lynn or myself or call. We haven't had any contact there, I don't think anyone's gone to council.
I mean, the reason I'm asking is because when we go to vote. You know, I don't want there to be any surprises where this whole group's gonna come out, well, we don't like this, or we don't like this. Because we are not all on the same page here. We're, we're, you know, we want all the residents to be on board with us, obviously.
It would encourage anyone to, I, that's why we. We're so specific about that public engagement, about improv. Because we just, we really, we're here, we're here, and we're, we're listening, but the clock is ticking, so if anybody wants to get. Any of the feedback in. The next opportunity, of course, they can go to council meetings or they can email or call in or at any times, but there's the public hearing on June eleventh. But the clock is ticking at this point, and we haven't had, we, I, we haven't had a ton of feedback. It's been pretty quiet.
I I mentioned, Lynn, before the meeting, I asked the question, how we're going to educate and inform the public. As to all the things that were made available that were done, because I. Everyone can envision a group of residents who are gonna question this and and wonder, you know. Why did, why did administration come up with this and they're forcing it down our throat? Without understanding that there were ways to go out onto the website and public forums and all the things that occurred. That's gonna be important in in putting us out when it gets closer to the election.
Like Sean had mentioned, there was posted more than ninety touch points at any point in time in the past year.
Opportunities were there, but still doesn't mean that you don't have to make people aware.
Exactly.
Again, I think that's. Well, Joe Beck, if there's a great job pushing solid, muscle they can enter, and I was involved in that as well as far as. Your websites and together Twinsburg, and I think that, you know, if anybody has any other ideas, something that we missed. Well, then by all means, let us know that now, but, you know, I don't know what else they could have done, I mean, rather than go. Sometimes you gotta go knock on people's doors and tell them and bring them out, but other than that, which is a possibility.
And I agree, I don't think it's for lack of effort, I just think it's the education of the.
I think you're always gonna have it, that's right, always, I think. Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of people, yeah, but but we we've there is still a little bit of time, so if anybody has questions, anyone at all, we're, we're.
Rebecca, thanks for recognizing that I have asked questions about the zoning updates. And those questions have been brought to me by residents, and I want, I want to commend you and and Lynn. For listening to those questions, because one of them in specific had to do with livestock and bees. And seriously, and it was not in there. So I think the perspective is, instead of being concerned about what. Maybe we don't like. If we ask a question, I have courage to ask any question somebody has me, cause like they're, I'm indifferent to it. Ask it, if it has merit, I believe that the folks that are guiding the ship are listening and taking action. Now, was I a hundred percent thrilled with everything? I think we could have went a little bit further on poultry and some other stuff, and we chatted about it. But there's a piece of it that relates to sustainability too, so you're you're balancing sustainability and. A changing demographic of what folks wanna use their yards for. We chatted about gartings and raised beds and front yards to get better sunlight. Not saying that I desired that to be in there, but I think it was worthwhile to have a conversation about where that kind of stuff could go. And, you know, to highlight, you know, questions were asked, action was taken, updates were made. It's responsive, and it happened like in a day or two, it was amazing. So I do have one question for you, Sean.
Yes.
And. It has to do with this pedestrian friendly, so we have the, we have that building, we have the parking lot on the side in the back. I'm certain many of us have been to places where the parking's in the back and it create a contrived downtown, I'm thinking Pinecrest Development. And I find myself, I don't know if you're familiar with that area, but it's a. Spotting in Cleveland area with an REI, and I find myself in the back of the REI. And walk in a country mile to get to the Allen Edmonds store. Now, I'm going to buy shoes, and ironically, I'm wearing them out, getting there, because the parking is not exactly close to it. So I guess the question is, like, as we're managing pedestrian friendly. And we have an aging community, how do we improve access for those who don't quite have the mobility and still be this desirable look of a pedestrian friendly neighborhood? For downtown districts?
Yeah, I think you still have to have parking spaces near the front door. And so the 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 image I showed you earlier of the. Building situated on the street, but where there was side parking and rear parking. That's probably what you're gonna get in a, in in Twinsburg. And that is because you could put a side door. You could have a frontage on the street with transparency with windows. But the front door would probably be right off the side by the handicap accessible parking spaces. And so that's, that's the compromise, rather than having the front door right on. The main street and then having to walk around from the parking lot, although that, that could work as long as it's, you know, not too far. But, but I think, I think it's more of a compromise, you know, where you get. Parking in the rear and the, the the door on the front and the opposite of the parking tends to be in more urban settings. And so I think what we're trying to avoid is any more of the, and I don't know the names of some of the. The shopping center, the small centers on the town green, but any more of that where the, where the parking. Field is the dominant feature and then the building is set back, that that really kind of takes away from. Framing that town green, as you know, that that they did with historic buildings. So that that's the idea.
We have that, well, coming into town, that daycare on eighty-two, you know that. And they will have, I think it's either a rear door or a side door, so you don't have to walk to the, to the sidewalk.
So that example is a daycare that was recently proposed and approved by the city of Twinsburg. And so. The, the preferred and non-preferred versions. That that was fourteen iterations to get to the preferred version. That's because of the lack of standard in the current code. That was by sheer will of. David Paulos, planning commission and planning staff. To get that model to the parking to the rear, and in particular, still maintaining appropriate parking. For parents dropping off children. But that building will frame Route eighty-two, and it will still have appropriate parking, so it can work. Not everybody can park by the door though.
Let's not forget, a very cooperative applicant. Those who wanted it to conform to the downtown district, but we still wanted accessibility. We really hammered that one.
I also think that parking lot is an anomaly because people aren't gonna be parking staying all day.
Right.
They're just dropping off, leaving, and the employees will be parking at the far side of the lot. But again, that's an unusual situation, cause it happens to be a child care.
Any other questions or comments for Sean? Okay, Sean, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
All of these documents are on the Together Twinsburg project page front and center, and we will add the PowerPoint in this video. At the end of the week as well, so if you'll let your constituents.
I am. So at this time, at eight oh two, we are going to adjourn the joint planning and council's. Review of our code, thank you very much.